Good evening. I'm going to call the March 7th, 2022 Davie County Commissioners Meeting to order. I'll ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come here tonight, we thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. We thank you for freedom and liberty. Lord, tonight, we especially pray for those families, including the children in Ukraine. Father, we pray that they would continue to stand for freedom. We pray that our great free nation would come in behind those freedom-seeking people, and that, Lord, lives would be saved, families would be kept together, and that nation would remain free. Lord, we pray for those in our country who are less fortunate than we are, those that are still hurting from COVID. Father, those that are hurting, Lord, literally, from the cost of a, the price of a gallon of gas now to drive to work. Lord, help us to remain free, strong, and may we always remember, God, that, Lord, you've told us you will never leave us or forsake us. You've told us, Father, that you have a plan not only for us as individuals, but us as nations. And so, Lord, tonight, we seek wisdom, we seek discernment, we seek knowledge and understanding, Father, to do the business of this great county that you've placed before us. And, Lord, I thank you for each of our staff, I thank you for men and women that serve in our law enforcement, our fire departments, our EMS, and our schools that make our great community safe, Father, and a wonderful place to raise a family. So, Lord, tonight, be with us, walk with us, help us to do what you would have us do, and we'll pray this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Rouse for the Pledge of Ledents.
Pledge of Ledents. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll do the Ethics and Conflict Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Due to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of County Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up now and let the board know before you adopt the agenda. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Okay, thanks. Next, I'll move to adopt the agenda. Do we have any discussion, or do I have a motion to adopt?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Okay. All in favor? By a vote. Thank you. All right, next we'll move to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, we have one individual who's signed up, Julie Whitaker, wanting to discuss mental health issues. Ms. Whitaker, if you'll come before the podium, state your full name so that we'll be on the record, and then I'll be taming you for the three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Whitaker. Greetings, hope everybody's having a great day. On February the 7th, we made a public comment to you advocating for some mental health initiatives here in Davie County. We would like to ensure that community supports are available for all of Davie's citizens. We are encouraged to hear your responses to our information. We are reaching out to learn how we can make some simple, low-to-no-cost suggestions a reality soon. So, I have a list of questions for you. What action by whom is needed to establish an advisory board to the D.C. Commissioners on how effectively Partners is working on behalf of and within Davie County? The advisors should be system clients or supporting family members with severe and persistent mental illness, intellectual differences, substance use disorders, and traumatic brain injuries. You may ask them to report to you monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly, or twice a year. While they may be involved with advisory or collaborative committees with Partners, those clients not involved with advisory or advocacy within Partners are also very much needed. Can you require county agency department leaders to attend Partners' community collaborative meetings? These meetings were designed to help the county and the LME/MCO work together on recognized issues, service gaps, and needed initiatives. In order to make progress that benefits Davie County families in need, representatives that can initiate change from key related and involved county agencies are needed. Currently, there is no representation from key agencies like domestic violence and rape crisis, social services, law enforcement, and emergency services, or the county manager. Can the process for selection and review of members of the Consolidated Board of Health and Human Services be explained to us? Can you, as commissioners, request that a seat or two representing residents regarding mental health be added to this board? We wish to see strong advocate for mental health consistently working on this board to help raise mental health as a health priority. Davie County families living with mental health struggles every single day deserve a voice that understands the reality of their situation. Who may we contact regarding the allocation of the American Recovery Act funds and deciding what the priority should be, how much initiatives may cost, and considering what programs can be implemented to help support folks with mental health challenges? We wish to see persons coping with mental health challenges involved, because persons without mental health challenges or who are not involved in the field do not understand what the local needs are and what is most important or helpful. Is there a policy defining how and when responses from county staff and county commissioners are delivered to individuals or groups making requests for information or services from the county? Are there guidelines for updating the county website and department pages? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there is no one else assigned tonight.
Okay. All right, next we'll move to presentations. We're going to have a Partners update, and I'll call on Mr. Jackie Copeland, please.
Chair, Vice Chair, I want to say good evening to you this evening. Again, as you stated, my name is Jackie Copeland. I'm with Partners Health Management, the Regional Director for Community Operations. So, I'm excited to share with the work that we have done. Partners has been excited for the opportunity, he came to us and said, "You want to consider us as your local management entity?" And we have been busy trying to meet the needs of Davie County residents. So, I look forward to giving you a brief presentation. It's hard to believe we're at a day, day 125 of serving Davie County. November 1st, 2021, was our go-live date. At that point in time, we started becoming the, if we call self-member care organization for Davie County. Then that period of time, we want to go through a few pieces to talk about some of the key areas that we want to focus in on. As you recall, the Secretary of Health and Human Services, we proposed initial date that the realignment committee and partners put together. We were asked to step up a little sooner because of request by the secretary. So, with that, we decided to be very strategic about our response. So, we identified some key areas that we wanted to make sure they're available for Davie County residents and members. First job for us was continuity of care for members and residents. Biggest concern with any type of transition such as this, we didn't want on November 1st, people getting served August 30th, to have to go through, go through as few changes and make it as seamless as possible. So, that was one of the areas we focused on. And to accomplish that, we worked with the county and providers to identify some prioritized providers, those that were providing services at the time of the transition, to make sure that members and families were able to continue with those providers if they choose to, and that requires us to have contracts in place. We focused on getting those contracts in place and also seeing if any gaps that we can address from day one. Then the other big focus was engaging members and their families and county departments and other county stakeholders who are, who want to know more about Partners, who have an interest in behavioral health services, and begin working with them, because we know that going in Partners, we need to introduce ourselves to the county and those key people. Because Partners, we operate on this, we call our Partners' Community Model, and that is, we want to be a part of the community. So, that means interacting with these various departments, them getting to know us, we know them, and truly become a part of your community. Want to go through and talk about those key areas. One of those members served, just want to share with you a few data points of what we've done so far. So far, our network providers, we have served over 280 individuals. That's, that's, that's out of the 1,757 Medicaid members that are in place. It's just a starting point, but we've started trying to engage them. One thing we in the state of North Carolina looks at is called a penetration rate. That's the total population in Medicaid, how many of those lives are we, are we serving? Now, we know, we're talking about from a behavioral health perspective, there are a lot of other, about 1,757, they may not have behavioral health needs, so they may not at this time be a part of, we work with. But, as you've probably heard, December 1st of this year, Partners has been identified as a tailored plan, and at that point in time, we will be serving the entire person, the behavioral health side along with the physical health side. Just to let you know about our penetration rate, you see it's 15.9%. State average is around 14.5%. Partners, historically, has always been the leader, if I must say modestly, the leader when it comes to penetration rate. We work to get people into services because we realize, we can do our best to get them in now when they're needing services, that helps decrease having more expensive levels of care services, having to leave the community, being taken out, maybe go outside of their home, and those sites needs. It's not, it's not ideal for the member in the family, and it's an added cost when we can keep them in the county. Not about cost, let me be clear about that, but it's about how the best serve members and their families, and so we want to keep them as close to home as possible. Again, we serve two pot, I said, we have two populations, excuse me. We serve Medicaid recipients, and we also, the Department of Health and Human Services has us to serve folks who are state-funded. Those are various populations the state's identified of uninsured, that they have monies that they ask us to manage that for them. So far, in that regard, we've served about 92 individuals at this point in time. I want to draw attention to those dates. We're talking about from November 1st up until January 31st, 2022. As we look at numbers, we base this off paid claims. That way, we can be sure that we're actually giving, giving the community, you know, these are services have been, have occurred, and we pay for those services, so you get actual, actual numbers of who are actually being served. Along, another department that kind of handles our works with members is our access to care line. That's a, a line we have that receives calls from members, providers, family members who have any questions about behavioral health needs. That line is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. You call, you'll be, someone will be there to answer that call. So far, we've had 19 people calling with mental health needs, nine with substance abuse needs, two with intellectual development disability needs, and 62 informational or referral-only. We have quite a few people call into that line, just to get information beyond behavioral health. It may be they're having some issues with food, housing, a variety of things. Sometimes we serve as kind of a warm line, people calling in who just want to talk to someone, they're going, they're in crisis, or they're feeling a little unease, and so we can talk to them and help them. So, we keep a referral list of the various resources within Davie County and the surrounding counties, just so people can, we can share the information with people as they call in. And then, we receive six emergent calls. These are calls when people are in crisis. When these calls come in, we turn, we respond and get them as soon as possible with a crisis provider. The state asks us to do it 2.5 hours, two and a half hours after the call comes in, to have them place somebody. We average really well at that, sooner than that, because we know every minute counts. We try to get them with the crisis provider to meet their needs. Next, care management. This is the department that probably has the most interaction with members and their families. Care management focuses in on helping those members, one, who are at high risk or have some high needs, making sure they get what they need, providing, help them to identify what are some of the things they need to, to be maintaining the community, any risks they may have. We're now, since we're getting a ready-operational plan, also looking at the physical health side, making sure they're getting those needs met. So far, we have 67 members presently enrolled or receiving services, mental health and substance use services, care management, excuse me. And then, for intellectual development disabilities, we have 61 members presently getting served in that department. Then also, we have some members who are dual-diagnosed. They have, they may have an intellectual disability diagnosis and also have a mental health diagnosis. And in that case, we have case management works with them. The departments work very closely with each other, because these type members need that, need that communication internally from us to make sure they're getting their needs Innovations, it, this is the department that works with those members in the community who have either one on the innovations waiver, waiver list, or want to get on the innovations waiver, funding to help those with intellectual development disabilities that have significant needs, how we can work, get, make sure their needs be met so they can be maintained in the community, or whatever the best level of care is for them. Right now, we have 47 for Davie County that are presently on, on the waiver list. We're, at the same token, the need is much greater than the 47 slots the state has allocated for Davie County. So, we maintain our registered unmet needs. It's basically a wait list, where we try to keep it, people can sign up for it, it's timestamped, because they want to get on that innovations waiver list, and when a spot comes available, then we go through that list, who's first in queue, we try to put them in there. So, we keep up with that, and also, at this time, we also try to help them get into services from other funding sources. It may, it may be they can qualify for state funding services, or some other Medicaid services that aren't necessarily in the innovation waiver, but they're services that may be able to help them at this time until they're, until, while they're on that register on their needs list. And then, another, this population also has, they receive, they're requiring to receive supports intensity scale assessments. These are assessments that look at, strength-based assessment, to look at what are their levels of need and what, what needs to support them. And this is something that's required to do on a regular basis for youth under the age of 15. It's every two years this assessment takes place. Adults, it's every three years. Of course, with the COVID-19 pandemic, families are a little apprehensive about having someone who's to face-to-face assessment have that, and we understand that, and the state has agreed to kind of give us, suspend that for right now. What some families are saying, yes, we want to consider that, and some in Davie County have. So, we have six scheduled for this month to get started, to get back on that. As you can imagine, this, this backlog started well before the transition took place, so we're anxious to get this started. We have staff that are trained to provide this assessment based off the national standard of it, and so we're looking forward to starting meeting and start providing that assessment for these families. Provider network, that's where the biggest, another major support, as you know, I provide network, we strive to have a high-quality network, and this is where actually members are getting served, members and individuals are getting served at. So, so far, as I mentioned earlier, one of the main focuses we had was to be sure that those providers are on, have contracts on November 1st. So, what we've done is we focused in 50, all identified providers, 50 of them, have had contracts and they're on board. Within that group, 10 of those providers are actually located here in the county, so we're glad to have that, and we're working to try, working with more providers to bring, actually provide services in Davie County. We know it's important to the members and residents of this county. In that group of that, 53 of them have decided to expand services. They added a few services to, new services just for Davie County based off needs that we've had. And a lot of the identification came out of the county realignment committee that actually had county staff involved, and some of y'all may have been involved, Julie and I have both involved in that also. And so, from that, we were able to take that information and really hopefully get more services, against the starting point. We planned, we're striving, working with providers to add more. Presently, 317 members or receivers, recipients have received services between the timeframe we're talking about. 26, 26% of those members receive services at a provider site in Davie County. Again, we want to increase that number, so we're working with provider network to go out and recruit providers, either to consider coming to Davie County and provide services, or serving even more in some way. We think that's just so important. Give you an idea of how much that looks like for dollars have been expended, and Medicaid and state service dollars you see, were a little over $2 million so far being expended.
Could I ask you?
Yes, sir.
In terms of the 26%, the, the 74% that would have to go outside the county, what would be the fartherest distance? I mean, just give me an example of, primarily to Forsyth County, or to?
Good, great question. We try the focusing of 40, 40-mile, 40-minute type of rules, so we try to keep them within that. So, you're right, that means Statesville's a place for a lot of folks go, over in Winston-Salem also is a place folks go. And then, there are a lot of cases where those providers do come in, and they provide some services in the home, where they may have an office in Winston-Salem or Statesville, or even maybe some down rolling county come across from Salisbury and that area up here, but, you know, they're not in the county. So, that's a, that's a good idea of where the folks typically go for those services, those two metro areas.
So, are you finding that any of those people are having transportation issues getting to those services?
Transportation, as you all know, that's always a big, a big challenge that our communities face. We look at social determinants of health, those things that kind of affect our ability to have good, keep a good wellness and, and what have you, and that's one, that's a struggle. We're working with the various transportation organizations in the county and other places to try to identify that, looking at new innovative ways to kind of deal with that. But you're, yes, to answer your question, yeah, it's always a struggle we deal with, and that's true also in other counties. Even sometimes, you know, as you know, we also, November 1st, start working Forsyth County, and even though it's an urban county with a, a transportation system, still a challenge there. So, again, that's one reason why we want to bring more service to the county. I mentioned the Partners' Community Model, and part of that is engaging with the community. We have took off running as fast as we could to, to make sure that we're interacting with a variety of organizations, county departments, members and families, and other providers in the county. I just want to highlight a few things real quickly for you. One of the things that we've worked on is our active crisis collaborative. We put, we have a collaborative that is already in place before we came. We're looking at rejuvenating that and kind of identifying some crisis plan that we're going to do. Right now, they have just completed their crisis services plan, it's mandated by the state, we have that. So, we are building that up, along with the involuntary commitment transportation plan, and also other crisis services. As you know, on that committee, we have the sheriff's officers involved, local EMS, other local providers here in the county that provide services, looking at how we can improve crisis services. We want that group to really look at how we can help identify things on the front end, because our goal with this is, one, we want to have, identify people before you have to get involuntary commitment processed. That just starts a whole series of events, that if we can engage people before that when they're having a crisis, may be better in the long run. Second, it hopefully frees up folks going to the local emergency department. The hospital is, ATRM is involved on this committee also. And then, thirdly, is to, a big focus to avoid people who have a mental health issue. Unfortunately, as we know, sometimes they go, police and law enforcement involved, they end up being in jails. That's not the place where we want people who have a behavioral health issue at. So, hopefully, this crisis collaborative's goal and charge is to help work on decreasing those barriers and getting people in crisis, and getting people where they need to be and getting them services.
So, are you having monthly meetings, like they used to have with the collaborative?
They decide to do it, since we started up, they decide to do it quarterly. We, we sell that committee, and we staff it, of course, and send minutes out and facilitate it, but with the committee can identify that. They chose to go quarterly, they can change it at any point in time, it's up to the committee and what they, the collaborative, what they want to do. So, that could, that could very well occur. One of the things they're looking at, if I may dive in, they're looking at some of the data related to crisis services, trying to get a better idea of the number of involuntary commitments that the county has. And with that, being able to look at benchmarks, to be able to try to address that, how to lower that amount. Also, a variety of other crisis data points that we're looking at. That's why we have, right now, Daymark Recovery Services has provided services here, they're also on this committee, and they're preparing some information to do that. Our goal is to really look at how, with my data perspective, look at how. We'll also engage with the probation parole. Our partners has, especially, well, several departments, but in the community engagement, engagement department, we have a training group, and so they're working with law enforcement, sheriff's offices, in this case, parole, probation, to provide some training on mental health, on mental health, various counseling, and then also, or information on different subjects and ways to help them. And then also, we participate, we have quarterly meetings with chief court counselors of the area. Krista Hyatt, the chief court counselor here, sits on that committee, and is one of the very active members, if I must say, and they look at what are, they help us identify gaps in services, and then work to put those in place that are needed. And also, in collaboration with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, also working with Again, we've had various conversations with stakeholders and advocates, if I may say. Miss, I have called my number, and they called me, and we talk about various things, and so, that's parts I share with them, that's how we identify where the gaps are. Data says one thing, but sometimes the story and anecdotal data tells a lot more, so we want to know the information, so we do our various planning to make sure we can close those gaps. We've had various virtual trainings, we prefer to do these face-to-face, but as you all know, we've been in the middle of this pandemic, and people have somewhat leery about meeting, but we're, several groups are excited to get going, having face-to-face, and we're going to be providing more trainings face-to-face. This is just a few of them. Some have been very appropriate with the COVID-19 epidemic, because we see, we're trying to, again, suicide prevention is a big one, and just the stress, dealing with the variety of things in relationship to people's mental health and social well-being, we've kind of seen a really need for those. So, we provide that training to organizations, members, community members. We also have, I should have listed, we have a members cafe, which is done verbally, I mean, done virtually at this time, excuse me, but we will do that face-to-face. Also, we have a community cafe, offering an opportunity for the shared information on various topics, talk about topics, hear feedback from them, what their needs are, and then utilize that to be able to provide services. And another one is, we have a lot of geriatric adult training. We have a geriatric services team, and their kind of role is to interact and, and make sure they're working with various providers, community groups, how to work with our senior adults and what's in their needs. So, they provide, you see, training on everything from cognitive disorders to dementia, to other mental health-related items, especially for this population, their needs are very special, so we want to, the team specializes just in that. Also, again, the opioid epidemic, that's, that was before us, before the pandemic hit, that's still an issue, so what we've done is tried to focus on ways to continue in Davie County to build off our response to that. One thing we're excited about is we contracted with Southern Family Medicine, and they offer certain, they collate here, I think they're up on 601, and they actually provide office-based medication-assisted treatment for the uninsured opioid use disorder recipient. This is, this occurred because of some state grants and some federal SAMPA grants that Partner has obtained to work with this provider to be able to serve those folks, because those, that's the major gap, as you can imagine, those who have no insurance but need services and the cost of that. This program helps, helps them be, provide the services that they need. And 56 uninsured members are presently being served there, along with Medicaid, they also serve people who are Medicaid members also. Another, we're working also, we have a big day coming up, we're scheduled to We're scheduled to deliver some 50-plus Narcan nasal spray kits to various community partners. I know I've been in contact with Davie County EMS, and they've asked for some. I think their present supply is getting kind of low, and then also the shelf life piece of it. You know, it only lasts for so long, so we hope to replenish that. We're lucky enough to work with the state and the federal government, get some federal funds to be able to bring that to our counties and offer that. While supplies last, as you can imagine, only so long. And in conclusion, I thank you for your patience bearing with me this information. We just simply want to work collaboratively and proactively in this county, focusing again on continuity of care and also working with the community agencies. We feel that the behavioral health needs that Davie County has, we want to be a partner with other agencies to kind of address those and close those gaps. And it kind of fits, if you've heard our CEO, Rhett Milton, talk about it, a kind of a mantra, a tagline. We focus on improving lives and strengthening communities. That's something that we take very seriously, even with those, we have new people we've brought on and hired, that we're focused, they have to buy into that whole aspect of. It's about improving the lives and strengthening communities. That's the bottom line we try to focus in on. Again, in conclusion, I'll give you some contact information. Again, I mentioned earlier, our access to care lines, some people call it the Hope Line. There's number four, you all, against staff 24 hours, 25 days a year. We also have for members and families, we have a line set up and an email just for them. It's our member engagement team. They're available, of course, can call that number there for you, 704-884-2729. There'll be people there to be able to answer their questions, help them talk about what are the issues they're dealing with, how we can help them, especially, you can imagine, family members trying to engage the members of their families that have any concerns or questions, that our team can handle that, or they can email, email, and they will respond to them. And then finally, myself, Jackie Copeland, I'm your Regional Director of Community Operations. That's my email address. Ms. Wright, Suzanne Wright, she knows how to get ahold of me also. She has my cell phone number, she can track me down. She can, yes, she is, she can track me down. And so, and we'll be able to respond to the needs that are being addressed and the questions. And with that, I'll conclude, and thank you for your time. Are there any additional questions?
I don't have any, I don't have another question, but I want to thank you for coming. I think, and I would hope Suzanne, Ms. Julie, we can have this more often, maybe once a quarter, whatever might be appropriate, because that, I think, maybe we've already had more information tonight than we've had in the last year on what's being done in Davie County. So, the more you come, the more we know. And along with some of the things Ms. Julie talked about and Suzanne talks about, I think it's just, I think it'd be great. And because there are a lot of things we just don't know, and we appreciate you informing us.
You're welcome, and thank you for inviting me here, and yes, we will come quarterly or whenever you all designate for us to come. Partners will be here.
I have a question, Jackie. So, when you say you have 47 members that are receiving, that are in the innovation service, and you have 75 on the waiting list, is that correct?
Yes.
And you can only accommodate 47 people?
We'd like to do more, but the state identifies what our number is. It's based off per county. Right now, you've probably saw the General Assembly has approved more than 1,000 slots in the state of North Carolina to expand those slots for innovation waiver slots. They didn't take that and they identified on a county level. So, to answer your question, yes, that's all that's been appropriated for us to serve, those 47. But, hopefully, some good news coming. We're waiting to kind of find out what additional slots will be. I talked to our Senior Director of Innovations, Clinical Director of Innovation Services, and she said she's still waiting to hear what that number is. Again, I love if it was 75, but we're thinking maybe, we don't know now, so I don't want to guess, but we're looking, it'll be some more slots. It won't be a huge number, though, unfortunately. We're just limited about what's been appropriated to us to kind of manage how.
And for those who are not familiar, could you clarify what exactly innovation that that service is, instead of just a title?
Yes, I will, thank you for asking a very good question. There's probably people in the audience who could probably give a better answer than I can. We're talking about folks who have intellectual development disability, a variety of different, again, different ways of learning and levels of ability. It's a population that has a huge amount of need. Unfortunately, our services aren't able to give all those needs, but what the state of North Carolina has on a national, federal level, they have identified certain pots of money and programs and various structures. Very, when you really get into it, it's very structured what they identify of just as far as resources they can have, everything from needing someone to provide some in-home support, supplies, because some folks who have intellectual development disabilities have some significant health issues also. That some of them may be bedridden. And so, it also includes services, again, that come into their homes, I mentioned. And quite a bit of services, unlike home modifications. You can imagine, yes, intellectual disability, there's problem with ability, and unfortunate family may not be able to make changes to help them be able to, you know, get to take care of their average daily living skills. There's some funding for, on the innovation waiver, there are funding available to help home modification and the like. Quite a bit of services, even on residential level too, yes, residential services they can also take in. Some of your sheltered workshops where people go and actually go on daily basis to go interact with other people and get some stimulation in the community to have those too. Those are some of the ideas. Again, I apologize, I'm not an innovations specialist, but those will give, hopefully, it gives you an idea. And I can, of course, share information and send that back with more detail.
So, there's a, so most likely, a large number of these 75 people on the waiting list are adults who are out of the school program and are not receiving anything right now.
I don't know the exact makeup of those. Again, I can find that out, but I would say, yes, there are some that. What we do is when a person, when a family member comes in and say their child qualifies for innovation, they want to be in the innovation waiver, we actually date stamp and time when they submit that application. The reason why is we've got 75 on there, and we want to just be fair of this person when they came. You'd be surprised, it may be three people on that same day came, and we use that, partners use that timestamp, be able to say, okay, this person called at 8:05, this one at 9:15, this one at 1 o'clock, so that the earliest one is going to... First slide, yes, sir.
So, it's chronological in the way you determine who, how you're going to bring them into the waiver, not necessarily on the severity of needs that they would have?
Fortunately, there are also emergency slots that take place, but those are ready. That's how it works, yeah.
Is that kind of a, is that a legislative mandate that indicates how you, okay?
So, in order to serve those numbers, we would have to come up with the funding outside of the funding you receive from federal. I don't ask these questions to make you think, seem like you're not doing it. I'm asking these questions to educate the people about what's going on, so.
I have a comment, Mr. Copeland, from being involved with Human Services Board and the staff and directors. Suzanne, she's here, I don't want to speak for her, but I am. When I go to the meetings, the staff is very excited that we have partnered with partners. They feel very supported, they feel that you're available, and best of all, you are responsive. And we hear that from the supervisors top to bottom, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We have, it's a team approach. We have, Ms. Wright, as you know, we have a team of people. I'm just operations manager, and I just know the text, I know everyone's phone number, how to text them, get ahold of them if there's a need really bad to be in place. We're looking for a team approach. You will probably hear, I won't speak for Ms. Wright, but we've had a lot of our senior folks, who they interact on some of these initial development planning. We even have regional people putting in place like myself to be there on an ongoing basis. So, again, as I said, we're glad you're seeing our community model, and that's truly to be a partner. Our name is intentional. We do so partnering with local government members and families, so thank you for that.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Copeland? Well, again, we appreciate what you do, and your, and Partners has received great merit so far in our community, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. And finally, half the partners, we're just, again, honored and humbled that you all came to us. And we MCO, so we're excited to be here and work with you and your members and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move to public hearings. The first one, the zoning text amendment 2022-02, call Mr. Meadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, you have several amendments, one to the table uses, two, a second one to 155.260 vested rights, and the third to section 155.281, voting permit required. The first, if the board recalls, several months ago, we changed the how we classified I-1, I-2, I-3, I-4 zoning districts to the GI and heavy industrial. What staff found was this is a correction to those tables where public buildings or facilities or public works or public utilities, those should have been allowed in any of those zoning districts. So, this is a clarification or a correction to that. The second, into vested rights, this is actually in response to a, another text amendment that the board did as a result of the legislature creation of 160D. If the board recalls, we had a series of planning legislation that was enacted. This actually adds a definition of what substantial commencement is as it relates to a vested right. And basically, if, you know, you have an existing grading permit or, and that you're actually working, or if you have an active permit or that you've installed substantial infrastructure on the ground, that's enough to be considered substantial improvement and allows that vesting to occur. And the third is when a zoning permit, it's really still all based on when a completed application is filed. What the legislature looked at was allowing permit choice. This is especially in cases where there's a soon-to-be change to an ordinance. Someone tries to come in and make that application prior to the ordinance change being made. But, legislature allows that permit choice, whether or not to adhere to an older version of an ordinance or a newer version, however, but there are certain criteria that you have to meet. One being that submitted application, whether work has been completed or is in continual commencement. So, you just couldn't come in and apply for a permit and then just let it sit, right? And just see and wait to what the requirements are. So, there are time shot or shot clocks for this. So, it allows the planning director to make decisions on that, on when those time periods start and begin. So, planning board did hear this at its February 22nd meeting and did make a vote of six in favor and none opposed. Before tonight, this is, does require a public hearing. Action you should consider is either, one, approve the amendment, two, deny the amendment, or, three, defer for additional consideration. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, and if you have additional questions for me, I'll be more than glad to answer those for the board.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Meadwell? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bogler.
Chairs and else, this is the day and hour of a public hearing pursuant to chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes, chapter 155 Davie County Coordinance Ordinance. This board is conducting a public hearing on proposed amendment to the Davie County Coordinance Ordinance, chapter 155 zoning ordinance for the proposed ordinance to review a text amendment to the zoning ordinance in section 155-125, 155-260, and 155-281 regarding table of uses, definitions, and permit choices. Do you notice that this public hearing was advertised, ran in a local newspaper, general circulation in the county as required by law on February the 24th, 2022, and March 3rd, 2022? As noted in the notice of public hearing included in your packet agenda, I would ask anyone who wishes to comment at this public hearing to please come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity then to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regard to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bogler. If you want to have any discussion, further discussion for this matter, someone might like to make a motion. Okay, I have a motion on the table to approve. I have a second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Five votes, thank you. All right. Mr. Meadwell, the second on the night would be the zoning map amendment 2022-02, George Johnson III, Laura Mathis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a request to rezone 2.57 acres consisting of three tracts of property from residential 12 and residential 20 and quality design overlay to neighborhood business quality design overlay. If the board recalls, probably Richard was probably on board at time and mark. You know, we looked at an alternative to just a zoning classification of highway business. The board thought it was important that we have a second type of commercial zoning district, which the neighborhood business district is. It's designed more for a, you know, low-intensity, small-scale type, retail-type operation or commercial-type use with limited evening or weekend or nighttime type activity. Included in your agenda package, you'll see the location of the three tracts. It's properly identified as 1832 Farmington Road. As you can see, there's an existing dwelling on one of the properties. Two of the tracts are currently vacant. If you look at the map that's included in, as your land use plan, you can see that a portion of one piece of the property is listed as a commercial mix and the other is residential, and it is in a secondary growth area. The planning board did hear this at its February 22nd meeting and voted in favor of six in favor and zero opposed to approve this rezoning. Action before you tonight, as this is a general use rezoning, the board should consider all those uses that would be allowed in that neighborhood business, not just the use that Ms. Mathis may propose. But, action that the board should take is either move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve, the statement be adopted, and a motion to deny, or, three, defer for additional consideration. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than glad to answer those.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Meadwell? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bogler.
Again, the chair has announced this is the date and hour of a public hearing pursuant to chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes, chapter 155 Davie County Coordinance Ordinance. And the county is, and this board is now conducting a public hearing on proposed amendment Davie County Coordinance Ordinance, chapter 155, for the proposed, under an application to rezone approximately 2.57 acres consisting of three tracts from R-12, R-20, and QDO to neighborhood business QDO. The subject property is located 1832 Farmington Road. Do you notice this public hearing is advertised and ran in a newspaper with low general circulation in the county as required by law on February 24th, 2022, and again, on March 3rd, 2022? As noted in public notice hearing included in agenda packet, I would ask for anybody who wishes to come forward to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then make your comments.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Mathis. I wanted to be here just in case there were any questions. I did want to state that the purpose of this business and in utilize the Johnson House is primarily to preserve it and to open it up to the community. If you know any of the history of Farmington, you will know that the Johnson House is directly linked to the foundation of Farmington, and most of the family lives out of state. And most of the family lives out of state. George Johnson, who originally owned the house, recently died at the age of 103. And he was a wonderful man. He was a wonderful neighbor. And we grew a good relationship through the years. I have a business next door. We live at 1842 Farmington Road. I currently have an in-home bakery and have done very well. And I've offered tea time in our, in our gardens with educational seminars. But I'm at the point now to where we are seeing people coming in from all around and where we've really outgrown the space and we are in need of a retail location. So, our relationship with the family has been wonderful. I love Farmington. If anybody knows me, I'm all about the history in Farmington. I feel like this house needs to be shared with our community. We have, as I had mentioned in the packet, we have started an educational garden that's back behind the house where we are working with the local 4H. And we are already in the works. We've got classes already lined up for the coming year. Once we get past this COVID mess, we hope to offer some great opportunities for our school kids to come in and enjoy some of the classes too. So, I just wanted to say that what we're trying to do is preserve it. So, the other lots that he had mentioned is cow pasture right now. We want it to stay agricultural. We actually have a neighbor who keeps cows on it. And then we're also looking at working out our next door neighbor to keep a horse on it. So, we are trying to keep it as agricultural as possible. The look of the house, we don't want it to change. We want it to blend in with the community, just like it always has. We will have to have some additional parking just to make it safe to get to, to the house. But other than that, you're not going to know much from the street, other than the sign and parking area. Do you have any questions about the business or our intent or anything? I, I do want to say that I've had a lot of calls, and it's been very positive. And I've enjoyed talking to a lot of people. The Johnson family that lived there, Ms. Vada Johnson was a teacher in Davie County School System for about 50 years. I've had a lot of her students call me. We're actually naming the garden after her. It will be the Vada Johnson Educational Garden in her honor. And so, I'm, I'm excited to even learn more about the history than I ever imagined and to share it with the community and the public. Any questions?
Do. Do I have any questions for Ms. Mathis?
Thank you so much, Ms. Laura.
Ma'am, thank y'all for being here.
I do have a question. This may be for Andrew, and this is a great project. I think this is great. The, just from a water absorption standpoint up there, we've got plenty of room for that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You know, the Johnson property is similar to our property. It's, it's all on a slope. And I think that has really, really helped with the septic system. We've been there 20 years and we haven't had to empty it yet, just to give you an idea. I'm sure we probably need to by now. But anyway, we did have, we did have the, the health department come out. I guess it was about three years ago when we were working with the family. They helped me design this business. We did it together. So, we knew they'd be happy with it. And at that time, they did do testing for the septic and all was well. We'll have all that redone, just to double sure. But at the time, they told me, and no bigger than the business will actually be, they'll, will probably just be required to come in with a second, a residential tank, and just attach to what's already there. And it should be an easy, easy do.
Anything else for Ms. Mathis? We appreciate you restoring the community, so.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of the public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay. Does anyone have any further discussion regarding this matter? Do I have a motion? All right, I have a motion on the table.
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Five vote. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to our next public hearing. Voluntary Agriculture District and Enhanced Voluntary Agriculture District Ordinance. I'll call on Mr. Eddie Liggins, Ms. Marsha McGraw, and Mr. Henry Walker.
Good evening. I too was one of Ms. Vada's students, fourth grade. She was a great teacher. I'm Eddie Liggins. I'm currently the chairman of the Davie County Voluntary Ag District. And the reason we're here tonight is originally adopted in 2008. This was amended in 2012 when the state changed qualifications for farms to enroll in the program and in 2018 to be in line with the Agricultural Development and Preservation of Farmland General Statutes. It currently needs updating to reflect changes from the 2021 Farm Act to the Voluntary Ag District as well as the Enhanced Voluntary Ag District Statute, NC General Statute 106-735. So mainly the legislature every now and then changes a few wordings. So, we just won't have the Davie wording the same as the state, state wording. And I want to recognize Henry Walker, as well as, Henry's one of our founders on this board also. And Marsha McGraw, he is our advisor. She's with the, she's the ag agent with Cooperative Extension Service. Marsha pulled all these changes from legislature together, passed them by the Voluntary Ag Board. We approved them, and then she ran them by our county attorney, Mr. Vogler. And with it being on the agenda tonight, apparently he approved them. So, appreciate, appreciate everybody's work on this. If you're kind of wondering what's, what the Voluntary Ag District is, the purpose is to promote agricultural values and the general welfare of the county, and more specifically, increase identity and pride in agricultural community and its way of life, encourage the economic and financial health of agriculture, horticulture, and forestry, and to decrease the likelihood of legal disputes such as nuisance actions between farm owners and their neighbors. One example on that, there may be a chicken house two miles away. The realtor forgets to tell the potential buyer of property over here. When the wind catches it just right, a little perfume comes floating over, and the person has difficulty dealing with that. We want to, it's the people that bought the property. It's their fault. We're not, it is legally registered. We are, I'm getting my numbers here. Yep. We are alive and well. Currently, 56 farms enrolled in the Voluntary Ag District in the county, over 6,693 or 28 acres. And then the number of farms in the Enhanced Voluntary Ag District, which means it must stay in that program a minimum of 10 years. There are three farms in it currently with 266 acres and in which brings a total of 59 farms with 6,959.61 acres. So, I'm here supporting this and... Henry Walker, lifetime farmer in Davie County. I've got five or six things I want to just give you some facts where ag is standing. This comes from Steve Troxer, our commissioner of agriculture at Raleigh in the department. 2021, the receipts, ag is the biggest industry in North Carolina. The receipts were 95.6 million. When he ran for commissioner, his goal was to reach 100 million. And he thinks this year, we're going to reach 100 million. I mean, not million, billion, excuse me, with a B, in North Carolina. Acres lost to solar facilities is more than the land that has been put in permanent easements in North Carolina. And I know y'all been dealing with solar issues and solar farms. And I have an issue calling a farm. Once the solar goes in, it's an industrial park. It's not a farm no more. Last year, there was 17,000 acres put in permanent easements in North Carolina. So, additionally, at a $25 million cost. We have things that taking up farmland, just such as, and I'm not opposed to it. I mean, you know, it's got the, the 1 billion Apple campus coming to Research Triangle. The 620,000 square foot Amazon warehouse at Smithfield. There's a 1.29 billion Toyota manufacturing plant coming Randolph County. And all this takes up farmland. And you know, it, it's not the plant. It's all the people it's bringing that's going to take up farmland for housing and all. And when I go up 81, leave West Virginia and go through that stretch of Maryland and get in Pennsylvania, I look at all that flat farmland. They've got all these mega buildings there. And you see the buildings, but what you don't see is all the land behind it that's took up for housing. And we all got to eat. We need three square meals a day, and we all need, we can't pay for everything. And we all need to keep that in mind. You know, ag is important, and that's just kind of what I'm saying. And I appreciate y'all supporting us in the program of Davie County and Extension. And I'd love for Extension to get in a new building. They've been in that building. I've been in contact with and dealing with Extension for 66 years now, and they've been in the same building. I'd love, before I die, to see them get in a new building. It'd mean a lot to me, and not just for the ag, but a building that other people can use facility that the whole county can use for meetings and stuff. Well, this county struggles a lot of times for, for meetings. And just like Extension, we have meetings, we have to go somewhere else. We went to senior sitter recently. We have to go to community buildings. We have to go to churches because we don't have places big enough to, to meet. And this county misses out on a lot of the stuff because we just don't have facilities. But, and I know we got issues, but I'd like to see the county work to, set a goal to work towards you. And I know it don't happen overnight, but I like to, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for what you do.
Again, I want to congratulate Mr. Blakely on his new job as chairman. I want to thank Mr. Renninger for his recent work as, as chairman. And welcome back, Mr. Ruffin. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
No questions. I would like to make a comment, though. I'd like to thank all of you that are involved with the agriculture in Davie County. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, before we get into the public hearing, I will tell the board that we already have a voluntary and enhanced voluntary agriculture district. We already have that. It's chapter 157 in our ordinance already. What this is doing is now complying with the, the different laws that the state has said that they need to have in that. So, that's what that amounts to. So, the chair has announced this is the day and hour of a public hearing pursuant to chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes and the Code of Ordinance and is conducting a public hearing on proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinance in chapter 157 to amend the voluntary and enhanced voluntary district that's listed in chapter 157 of our Code of Ordinance. Do you notice that this public hearing is advertised, ran in the new, local newspaper with general circulation as accounted as required by law on February the 24th, 2022, and March 3rd, 2022, as noted in, noted in the public hearing included in your packet? I would ask for anyone who wishes to comment at this public hearing to come forward, state your name at the podium, and then make your comments. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair, close the public comment section of this public hearing, and provide the board the opportunity to discuss what among yourselves, you, action you wish to take.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. And I, I want to say this. Here, not long ago, we had some folks in from Piedmont Triad. Where they were, they were talking about, I believe, they, I forget what they call it, food equity. Food equity. Well, one of the things that came up at that meeting was for, in, in regards to Davie County. In our lifetime, my lifetime, and this is just dairy farms. We, at a certain point within my lifetime, we had over 200 dairy farms in Davie County. Now, we have none. And, you know, we want, we want to grow. We want to progress. But that doesn't mean, I think Mr. Walker, Ms. Lillian once said, we got to eat. And that's, farms feed us, and we can't, we can't lose sight of that. So, thank you for, thank you for all y'all. Thank you for all y'all do.
I also would just commend what Commissioner Jones said, but obviously, growing up in an agricultural family and, and the importance of farming, and also the importance of passing it on and, and teaching children and teaching how this, this generation turns, how to feed yourself, and again, working with the land and, and making all that work. So, we appreciate what you do. Again, I've got a motion, a second on the table. I have any further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. Ready? Call for the vote. Five vote. Thank you. Approved.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. A motion and a second. I'll make a consent at the end of the discussion. Call for the vote. All in favor? Five vote. Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move to new business. Do we have any new business before us this evening? Seeing none, go to old business. We have one on the agenda here, the vote on Senate Bill 300. I'll call on Mr. Vogler.
You recall, this is what we had a public hearing on in February. And, and again, this is very similar to what you just voted on as far as the agricultural district and enhanced voluntary agriculture district. These are some laws that have changed down in Raleigh. And it's all actually part of a bill that was passed entitled Senate Bill 300. And that Senate Bill 300 had a section in chapter 13 on certain ordinance, county ordinances. And we had to go back through our ordinance and designate within certain parts of that ordinance what was criminal and what wasn't criminal in order to enforce the ordinance itself. Talk with and, and work with the sheriff on that, J.D. Hartman, and so that he's got teeth in which he can enforce the ordinance on certain things. But the bill, the Senate bill, said notwithstanding the normal process for adoption of an ordinance, it could not be adopted at the first meeting that it was introduced at. And so, now we have to come back a second time and at this point in time have the vote on whether to adopt or not to adopt the provisions and the changes we've made to our ordinance or, or that we're proposing to make to our ordinance. So, we need to have a motion and a second on whether to adopt those changes that were discussed at the last meeting.
All right. So, I'm seeking a motion to adopt the changes that we've already discussed and heard. Does anybody have any discussions, or does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. Five vote. Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll go to the county manager report. Mr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see, this is, I think, my 44th year of making manager reports, and I'm not going to make one tonight. I have spent the last week doing an awful lot of listening. I want to thank the staff. It's, it's not been a hard transition, but I do want to thank the staff for all the work they do and, and all the ways they're helping me transition. I look forward to, to helping things move along. And in that spirit, I'm going to let that be my report for the night so that you can move along with your business. If you have any questions, happy to respond to any that you might have.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Ruffin? Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. All right. Next, we'll move to commissioners' comments. As always, ladies first. Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, today is National Be Heard Day, and I had not heard of that. But if you don't know what that is, it is an occasion for small business owners and aspiring owners to make their voices heard. So, I think that's very appropriate for tonight. Ms. Laura, I want to thank you for what you're planning to do in the Farmington community. I think that, that is just exemplary, and of course, I have been privileged enough to have... to have some of your lovely baked goods, so I know that's going to be exciting. But I just thank you for your efforts to make a difference in the community and to keep that history alive. And of course, our farmers, my daddy made me farm my whole life, and I wouldn't take one minute for it, because, you know, if you know how to grow food, you're not going to go hungry. And I thank you, because it's hard work, and I appreciate you. And the farms that we have in this county, I have some friends who are farming, and they work very, very hard, and I'm very thankful for them and thankful for everyone who supports them. So we need to encourage all of our small businesses, and we need to support them, and we need to help them grow and prosper. And they are the ones who sponsor our baseball teams, and the ones who donate to our charities and, and keep our churches alive, and we need to take care of small businesses and farmers in this county. So thank you. Ms. Julian Gannett, thank you so much for your continued passion to educate us and to be an advocate for those who are unable to speak for themselves, and for their family members who don't know where to go to get their voices heard. I always appreciate you keeping us on our toes, keeping us informed, because a lot of things we just, we miss, we don't know. So thank you for sharing those things. And I agree with you, I personally agree with you, I can't speak for anybody but myself, but definitely I think that mental health needs to be represented on the HH, oh, HHS board so much, so. And I would like to see those collaborative meetings grow to what they once were. I think during COVID and all, they, they really faded away, so that we lost a lot of that communication, so we need to work hard to build that back up. So thank you. And I will simply say, Mr. Joseph Ashburn, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For all you do. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We're always here to hear, hear you, and we hear you loud and clear. It's a great county we live in. We got a lot of, we have diverse opinions. We have, as we talked about, we have a lot of farm, farming in Davie County. 75% of all the jobs in America come from small businesses and farms, not large corporations. And so we have that great mix here in Davie County. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to raise a family, and that is not because of us, that's because of you. And we thank you for coming out and having your voice heard. Mike, welcome back. I will say this, we taught, and Mike is also not only going to help us here at the county level with his many, many years of experience, but he's also going to help us transition to that next permanent county manager. So I look forward to the calendar that we can put together, that show, that we can communicate with the people of Davie County, what we're doing in terms of hiring that next, next great county manager. So thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Paul Dexter?
I too would like to thank everybody for coming, taking their time to come out tonight and, and share with us your concerns and opinions. I too would like to welcome Mike back. I think I was here when he was here before. We had a great, great time while you served here, and look forward to more. Also, I'd like to thank all the staff for all the hard work that they do and have done over the past few months and years, and all the people that serve on the boards around the county. I'm a prime example of somebody who grew up on a dairy farm, who watched with dismay as that farm went under housing development and golf course. I know the importance of farming, and I appreciate the job that you do in promoting the farm work. All the people who came out tonight to give us valuable opinions and information that we did not have before, Mr. Copeland and your group. And I'd like to thank Suzanne for the difficult job that she does also in that respect. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Reniger?
Thank you. I'd like to, thank everyone for coming out this evening. Mike, welcome back, even though it'll be for a short time, we think, but hard to know. I would also, lots, lots have been said about the agricultural situation. In 1972, the number one employer in Davie County was Dairy Farms. Now, fast forward 50 years, we got zero. So, and I'm getting that from the Davie County Enterprise, so don't, someone might want to check that, but I do have an article about that, so I'm saying that's the gospel. And anyway, the property that Ms. Mathis was here to get rezoned, Mr. Johnson, he, for those of you who don't know, is a national treasure. He, he was a decorated pilot in World War II, and he was like talking to a history book. It was, he was an amazing man. And he drove up to, he drove up to like 100, some good genes there. But anyway, great success on your project there. And with that, thank you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Ms. Julie, I wanted you to know that Mr. Ruffin was speed writing and some of your questions, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Ruffin to look into that a little more and get us something formalized for you. I appreciate that. And I also want to give a shout out to all of our staff and our department heads. We've had a good, positive transition here. We had some meetings to get Mr. Ruffin going, and again, you, you know you have our support, and our doors are always open. So again, we appreciate what you do for this county, and this is a great place to raise your family, to have a farm, to open a small business, to take your kids to play baseball or basketball. This is a great place, so we don't want that to change. So with that being said, I'll close the Commissioner's comments, and we'll go, get ready to read here. We have a closed session here, I have two of them, I'm going to have to read. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. Two, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A5 to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on or behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real estate by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. The board is looking at multiple locations in Davie County to determine best coverage for EMS bases. Closed session, do I have a?
Motion, we're in closed session.
What motion do I have, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, we're in closed session. Thanks, everybody. Good, we're back in an open session. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.